Goodness, Father. Thank you so much for the very, very blessed rain that you gave us this past weekend and the beautiful weather that you gave us this past weekend. Please be with those that have lost family members. Please be with those that have people in the hospital or going to doctors. And please be with our Catholic patrons as they go to and pro this week. And please be with these young men as they make decisions for our counting. And please be with us as we are getting ready just to celebrate the resurrection of your son, that we all remember the reason for this season. And please be with us as we go to those different celebrations at this time. We ask all these things in St. Louis son's name, Jesus' name. Amen. Not even any big ones in it.
I know. This meeting just got a lot longer.
What range did you have at your house?
Well, I'm not sure. I crap mine.
Oh, no!
Everywhere else I mentioned I have. That's what I had.
(Inaudible). Unless I have one turkey.
1.4.
Oh, what was that? 1.4.
Just need it again next week. I'll just say Kentucky got 15 inches there.
Oh, my goodness. I haven't watched any TV, I don't think, since Wednesday last week.
I stole your pack this morning.
Yeah. We were done with it. Kind of.
Yeah.
It was packing in the rain and it was building up on there. I was like, man, I guess we're better. I don't know.
I'll pull blow sand down that car, but I'll try to pack it while there's a little moisture.
You got to follow those two. Want to see the other half for tomorrow?
Yeah. I won't be here tomorrow.
Oh, darn.
Ooh, here we think turns out this way.
That's right. Don't you guys need to buy some?
Goodness. Blanket, I think. That's you.
Oh, sorry.
And want to make it fair, if you're gonna sign his name tomorrow, you should sign theirs today, right?
That was a blanket, dude.
I wrote another difference on that, so I...
Motion to approve the AMO's.
Okay, blankets from MS, Sheriff District 1, District 2, and Turkey, unburst it.
Make the Ashley, man.
(Laughter).
That's him. So does that really help?
Motion for the blankets.
All favor. Both the officer and court.
We have officer reports from the Treasury, Election Board, Court Clerk, Court Clerk for Resurrection, Sheriff, Assessor, and County Court. Sorry, I'm just having them there. Sorry. And you weren't on my research text list.
I don't know if that goes with that. You guys can say that.
Motion to approve the monthly officer reports. Alcohol, motor vehicle tax.
I'm gonna have to go find that one. I'll find that one while you guys are signing the preparations. I'm sorry.
Okay. Preparations.
Yes, we already signed it. You two did not sign. You just saw on the front. I got them. Did you guys see to sign that one on the front?
What's that?
There's one there and here's alcohol and the... I'm gonna do that, make a motion on it. So I don't... Sorry. They were stuck together.
I'll make a motion on alcohol, vehicle tax, second.
There's that, Laniela. Make the force more than that.
But Harold, they both choose to say all the time, "I'm good at this."
Dang it. Motion to approve the preparations.
Road crossing for that. Open bids for the Fairgrounds Arena?
We have six bids that came in.
So it's Herringy Shields Commercial Roofing. And that's something total will be $360,000. Alkaline roofing. $450,900. Roof Masters. Be here in 32,000. Central weatherproof, central weatherproofing out of Edmond. $495,750. BB Roofing, Turkey. $257,175. King Construction, $297,977.
$297,977? Just make a motion to accept them and table the awarding. We're gonna have a meeting next week and...
All favor. All favor.
We had approved the option two on this. It wasn't an and/or, it was a both. So I put both down here with today's date. If you'll sign a little bitty in that area or something, we'll go ahead and get a D.O. one for that second part then.
Sometime where at?
Left, bottom right corner, just anywhere, yeah.
So actually, we thought we was getting a 16 down this 30,000. 31,000. I'll make a motion to accept the written vote. All favor. County clerk go out for bids for three used SUV under $60,000 on for Sheriff's Department.
This is the specs. Here's the, to go out for three weeks. If they'll assign both of those. They're sending them to Big Bear Motors out of Moldro, Oklahoma, Joe Watts out of Bonita, and Emergency Vehicle Resources out of Platermore.
I'll make a motion to go out and bid. Product properties, this for District 3. I believe there's four of them.
Four of them, yep. There's two copies of each one of them there.
I'll make a motion to approve items 15 through 18, or 15 through 18, the use of...
Donation Sheriff's Department. Is it Lou Dean or Geraldine?
Geraldine.
Geraldine Witt.
Geraldine.
I'll make a motion to accept a donation. Adding a statute to the resolution to the burn ban.
I just added that very first little whereas on there.
I've reached out to Brian Mitchell. We've talked about putting a resolution for maybe putting a fine on. This is just a state statute that's already in place, and this was Brian's recommendation. It just kind of gives a little more teeth to our burn ban. If you, especially if somebody breaks it on purpose. And I mean, if you're dragging a chain or blow out a tire or spark a rim, there's no crying there. That's an accident.
You don't think it's anything, it was just... Yeah, just, that's just, I just added that to the burn ban thing.
Oh, okay. Well, next time we approve the burn ban, it's on the actual burn ban. And I got a text message from Ryan where he recommended that. If you'll see it. Motion to accept the statute. Is it? Yep. All favor. Survival Fight Group membership proposal.
I just already signed this, but they didn't need it, and I need to send their payment, so there's just, um, one place to sign on, one, two, three, four. I just need a copy of original for them, and then, um, this is the amount that I'm sending in. So, there's two copies there, if you'll sign both of those two pages, and then the two pages on the, one for us to keep, the top one, and then I'll sign the bottom one, and a little bit of it's in there.
Sixty dollars.
Yep, check with me.
All my motions, all this of power fight group.
One second. All favor. Eighty-twenty draft for jet responders for... Well, I've been here. Motion to approve. All favor. I'm pretty busy today, we're doing.
Longest meeting.